It is seven o'clock. We'll call this meeting to order. Sorry about that. We'll first have our invocation led by Police Officer Jeff Mosley from the West Covina Police Department and the Pledge of Allegiance will be done by Councilmember Rob Sotelo. Please rise.
We recognize your presence here tonight. Thank you for the freedom we have to gather as a community in order to discuss the important matters that will influence and shape the future of our city. We ask for your grace and your divine blessing this evening as we address these important matters. Lord, we pray that you will give our Mayor Mike Tuohy, Mayor Pro Tem Shelley Sanderson, and fellow City Council members Steve Hurford, Rob Sotelo, and Fred Sykes the ability to lead our city with integrity, humility, and compassion in accordance with your will. Give them wisdom and guidance as they work diligently to find solutions and address each of the difficult challenges at hand. Bless each and every person here tonight. Draw us closer together as a community and help us to set the example for other communities around us. Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, roll call, please.
Mayor Tuohy.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Sanderson. Councilmember Hurford.
Here.
Councilmembers Sotelo.
Here.
Councilmember Sykes.
Here. Councilmember, Mayor Pro Tem Sanderson has contacted us and she would be not making it tonight. She is out ill. Reporting on a closed session, Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I recite to reflect that the City of West Covina City Council and the City of West Covina Successor Agency did convene their special meetings to consider the items as posted on their notice of special meetings. With regard to the City Council's special meeting, the record should reflect that the -- all members of the City Council were present during the closed session with the exception of Councilmember Sanderson. With regard to the first item listed on the City Council's special meeting agenda, Conference of Labor Negotiators Pursuant to Government Code Section 5495-7.6, the record should reflect that there was a report provided by staff. However, no final action was taken on this item. Nothing to report on -- nothing further to report on that item. With regard to the next item, that being public employment pursuant to Government Code Section 5495-7, position of City Manager, that item was postponed. The City Manager was not present for this item. Nothing further to report on this item. In regard to the final item, Conference with Legal Counsel Existing Litigation Pursuant to Government Code Section 5495-6.9A in the case of West Covina versus Hassan Imports, there was -- this item was also appeared on the successor agency agenda. I'll get to that in one moment. Turning to the agenda for the successor agency, the record should reflect that all members of the successor agency were present except -- with the exception of Board Member Sanderson. With regard to the second item on that agenda, and that being Conference with Real Property Negotiators Pursuant to Government Code Section 5495-6.8, a report was provided by staff on this item. However, no final action was taken on this item and nothing further to report. And then returning then to the case of City of West Covina versus the Hassan Imports partnership, both the successor agency and the City Council did consider this item. There was a briefing by special counsel for this item. Direction was given to the City Attorney to report to the bankruptcy court the authorization attorney by the City Council and successor agency during the closed session. However, there is nothing further to report on this item, and this concludes my report out in closed session.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager, changes to the agenda?
Yes, we would request that item number eight on the consent calendar be held over.
Okay, no problem. Thank you. If we could have our Deputy Fire Marshal Jason Brightley please come forward. Jason, we're here to proclaim as a city and the City Council, West Covina Prevention Fire Week -- Fire Prevention Week, October 7th through the 13th. So why don't you go ahead and tell us about it, Jason?
I'm going to speak a little bit right here. I want to speak a little bit about Fire Prevention Week. My challenge to everybody here is to -- Fire Prevention Week is commemorated as the great Chicago Fire. It's a fire that took place in 1871, the month of October. It was a blaze that burned for two days. Two hundred and fifty -- two hundred and fifty people died. A hundred thousand people were left homeless. Seventeen thousand structures were destroyed. This tragedy inspired us to reform all the fire life safety codes that we currently adopt. Each October, the West Covina Fire Department, along with fire departments across the United States, provide this week an educational program to inform the community of fire life safety. This year, our current theme is "Have Two Ways Out." So this leads to my challenge to everybody here. What I'm asking everybody is next week during Fire Prevention Week, take time out of our busy schedules, and I know we all have busy schedules, to put down BlackBerrys and iPhones and sit down with your families and discuss fire life safety. Talk about what to do when the fire -- the smoke detector goes off. Talk about how to get out and specifically how to have two ways out. Sit down, drop floor by your home, and show the exit route. Show a meeting spot for you and your family to meet outside of the structure. With that, I'd like to thank everybody and thank the mayor and the public.
Thank you, Jason. If you guys need help drafting a plan, Jason goes to all the individual houses in West Covina and does that for you.
Thank you.
Our first speaker is Alicia Orr or Owen Oron, and on deck is Elsie Messman. Alicia?
Hi, how you doing? This is the first time that I'm here. I've been living in West Covina for more than ten years. I love the city. I'm very proud to live in West Covina, and I've been hearing a lot of rumors such as that we've -- I guess we're having some issues with the trash collection, which is Athens. I've been very happy with their services. They're really good. The driver, the driver that they have, he's been my driver for ten years. He's amazing. I love my driver, so I'm really happy with their services. Also, I've been hearing rumors in getting flyers about the police department and the fire department that I guess we want to outsource them, and I will really ask them -- ask you guys to keep them because I strongly believe that we need the police department in our city. We need our own police department, and we need our own fire department. Our police department, they're always there for our residents, and they're great, so I'm just here to let you know that. Please keep them in the city. Don't outsource -- don't outsource their service. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Elsie Messman, and Ray Hernandez is on deck.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, staff, and everyone here tonight. My name is Elsie Messman, a resident of West Covina. I'm here today to speak about Athens service. I have my bill in front of me and it's dated July 31st, 2012. The due date is August 15th, 2012. Now, I am paying for August, September, and October in advance. The gas company, the cable company, Southern California Edison, your phone bill, are just a few examples that we pay on a monthly basis. Athens is using our money before services are being rendered. Not only are they saving money on postage, paper, staff, they are also using our money against us. There are some people here tonight that walk the streets on the recall in the heat. All Mayor Tuohy, Sanderson, and Hurford had to do was make a few phone calls, and here comes Athens, $4,800. McIntyre, $3,000. Charles Company, $4,800. Pacific Development, $4,800. They collected $27,500 without taking a step using the money against the residents. So who is running this city? The contractors are -- or could we call them the council's client and campaign donators? And by the way, Glenn Kennedy was the treasurer for them, and he has a graffiti contract for the City of West Covina. My second topic I want to speak about is the Discover West Covina magazine. Is it really a newsletter or is it just a propaganda piece of paper for the council to use? Is it really designed to inform the residents of what is going on in the city, good and bad? I don't think so. I have not seen anything on the Hill, the lawsuit, Athens rates, et cetera, just to name a few. The residents want better web service, and what does Chris Freeland want but to file this report? Council does not want to improve the web, and Chris Freeland wants to keep his job as he -- so he does what the council says. Forget about the people. There's always money for what the council wants, but not the residents. They waived over a million dollars in fees for two employees so they could -- so they would not appeal the case. If you lost your case twice, are you going to appeal it again? If we delete our Public Information Officer, that's over $80,000 a year plus benefits, plus the printing, plus the postage. That would cover all the web for years. You gave $21.5 million to the redevelopment from our reserves, and that didn't seem to bother you. This is all taxpayers' money, not for the council to mismanage and use on their projects only. Mayor Tuohy, next time you get up here to make awards, could you please put your back to the camera so everyone can see your butt and the back of your head like we have to do? Remember, Mayor, there's a lot of you here -- a lot of us here tonight that were working before, and you were still in diapers. Thank you.
Thank you. Ray Hernandez and Lloyd Johnson on deck.
Good evening, Councilmembers. Good evening, Michael Tuohy, Mayor. Mayor Tuohy, I was taken back and disappointed by your condescending commentaries at the last council meeting, video web streaming, council discussions. Your effort to place a spin on the speaker's statements, quote your words, "One of my concerns," mentioned transparency in viewing the meeting, "is not necessarily getting yourself on TV. That should not be the motive. It should be the delineation of the meeting, not making sure everybody else is getting your five minutes of fame." Your comments were short-sighted, offensive, and disingenuous. The term "speakers" always included City Council, staff, and all podiums. Now let me make myself crystal clear. This has never been about any oral communication speaker. It's about the ability to view clearly council members of their body language, eye contact, sincerity, and when appropriate, gestures, and humor. Staff reports speakers at City Council meetings have also stated that the city is not being transparent because City Council meetings are not available on cable television, has no merit. Cable is irrelevant. Now, the definition of transparency, according to Webster, is "the quality, state of being transparent, a picture, a design, a photograph, or image to include the meaning, easily seen, open, frank, candid, demands earnest." By not adding additional cameras, the West Covina webcast is not transparent. It's that It's always been about video streaming, and video streaming alone. Web streaming is quality communication at all levels. Direct satellite TV is now offering the web, expanding viewership. Mayor Tuohy, it's apparent you continue to undermine improvements of the web videocast and make every effort to throw it under the bus. Have you forgotten the people you serve? If you're not part of the solution, then you must be part of the problem. In 2008, the majority of this council elected to pull the plug, blackout all video communication of West Covina council meetings through May 212, four years. At the same time, other cities like Signal Hill had the vision and commitment to their residents to contract for free charter communication services while this council majority stood by and did nothing. You call that transparency? I must note, due to the cable deregulation of the cable industry, Signal Hill lost its free charter service, however, continued offering broadcasting of the City Council meeting with more than one camera. Staff reports that Covina -- that West Covina is offering equal quality cast -- webcast as other cities when using one camera, but failed to mention other cities not broadcasting an entire council meeting with one camera. Disingenuous. Staff failed to provide cost analysis of web comparative costs with other cities. Staff failed to review independent contractor costs for charter communication for webcam operators which other cities are using. Staff states major negative financial impact to provide a camera operator to general fund. However, at the same time, West Covina City Manager privates expansion of the West Covina Discover printing and mailing cost, and we all know how much that is. Staff report Agenda Number 10 is nothing more, in my opinion, than a convoluted, distorted report designed to confuse the residents by commingling cable TV with the cost of web streaming. It's never been about Mount SAC. It's never been about TV, cable. It's always been about video streaming. Yet, staff wants to commingle, emix, and confuse this. Solutions that have been ignored by staff include using independent contractor status camera operators, using Mount SAC interns, using volunteers, broadcasting West Covina council meetings only, transferring the West Covina Discover to the West Covina homepage, saving mailing and pending costs, using pop-up ads on the West Covina homepage reduce -- using pop-up ads on the West Covina homepage reducing camera operation cost. It's about video streaming, period, and this can be done in many, many ways. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray. Lloyd Johnson and Vicki Schlega on deck. Lloyd?
Good evening, Mayor Tuohy and Councilmember Sanderson. One little note I'm going to say about the video streaming. My only thing is, I keep hearing about we have to hire a couple more employees. Why -- since we have the money there for equipment and stuff, why couldn't something be made where even like Chris Freeland could operate the camera from up front here? What I'm saying, you can have even just one camera. That camera can be moved by someone up here. We wouldn't have to hire anybody else. When the meeting's over, you turn it off and you go home. That's an idea I just -- if you could look into. I know it's being done at other cities. Now, what I'm really up here for is that I hope it doesn't come in front of this council, but I'm bringing it up right now anyway. A few years back, when only Councilman Hurford and Councilman Sanderson was on the council, D.C. Corporation wanted to build sixty-seven homes over there where the old dairy was on San Bernardino Road and changed the zoning from commercial to residential, where this council, with Councilman Hurford's support and Councilmember Sanderson's support, turned it down. So they built a beautiful commercial buildings over there. I think it's fabulous. But from what I understand, from a good friend of mine told me, and this is very true, D.C. Corporation has bought the old Pick's property, and it's in escrow right now, with the intentions on changing it from commercial to residential. They want to go back and try to build homes in there. This was told to someone over at Blackridge. So I'm just hoping that if it comes forward, if the council doesn't know anything about it, that we, as I stated a few years back, we were against more homes going in there now and changing that property from commercial to residential because this is the last bit of commercial property that really is in West Covina, and we don't want it. We do have two big cell towers over there right now, which there's no problem with them because they are in commercial property. So I'm just hoping that if it comes up in the future, that you remember that council said no before, and I hope they say no again. Thank you.
Thank you, Lloyd. Vicki Schlega and Phil Marino on deck.
Thank you, Mayor Tuohy. I'm here amongst all the negativity. I'm here to say something nice about the city, and that is, West Covina Lions Club is offering their free vision and hearing to West Covina residents on October 13th from 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., and I think you all have a flyer on this, in honor of our White Cane Day. In addition, this year, we decided to do free glucose testing for anybody to see if they're diabetic, so it's going to help a lot. It's going to be at the far end of the farmer's market, which is adjacent to the end of the parking lot and the parking structure. Come out to the farmer's market. Don O'Tyr is not here, so I will tell you. Come out to the farmer's market and enjoy all of the fruits and vegetables and wares we have, and stop in and get your free testing because it really does make a difference to you. We let the children in West Covina have the free testing. Now it's time for us to give it to the rest of the residents, the parents, the grandparents, and it really is beneficial. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Vicki. Phil Marino and then Sue Agino is on deck.
Members of the City Council, members of the city staff, and members of the audience, I've heard a number of people addressing West Covina Discover. Probably the largest audience that this body has ever had was a discussion of whether or not the City Council was going to approve a medical building here at our civic center. So my first question is, why hasn't the court date in Santa Monica Court, October 31st, been published in the West Covina Discover? Do you realize how many people were here, both for and against that building? Isn't that something that should be in the West Covina Discover magazine? Something going up at our civic center and not -- it hasn't even been addressed. So here's my statement to the City Council and to the taxpayers of West Covina. The subject, which members of the West Covina City Council voted to hire an attorney to defend the city against the lawsuit to stop the medical building at the West Covina Civic Center? In February of 2012, a writ of mandate, a complaint of declaratory relief, was filed with the Superior Court of the State of California for the County of Los Angeles by the attorney representing the West Covina Improvement Association. This lawsuit was filed by West Covina residents who did not want the medical building in our civic center. As a West Covina taxpayer, I would like a copy of any and all documents that would authorize the City of West Covina to hire an attorney to defend the city in regards to this lawsuit. We haven't been told anything. If the city's being sued, don't you think the citizens should know who's defending the city and how much money it's costing us? What's all the hush about? The City Council voted to overrule the city's planning commission and to go forward with the medical building at the civic center. Sherri Lane was on the City Council at the time of that vote, but she resigned before the lawsuit was filed. Since many West Covina residents voiced their opposition to the medical building, it's only fair that all West Covina taxpayers be told who voted to spend taxpayers' dollars to hire an attorney to defend the city's council decision to go forward with the medical building that they did not want. The City Council must be held accountable for the dollars they are spending on a project. Many West Covina residents opposed. Thank you.
Thank you, Phil. Sue and Forrest Wilkins is on deck. Forrest?
Hi. First, I'd like to say I don't usually come to the City Council meetings and have a lot to voice. I am kind of a little taken back by, and this is off my subject, I'm a little bit taken back by the disrespect and the personal attacks that I saw today by the residents. I'm embarrassed by them. So with that being said, I will just forward and say what I have to say. I've lived in the City of West Covina for 50 years. I was born to this city, as was my husband. We've raised our three daughters here. And May of 2007, I actually was going to come to you guys for guidance. It's just had rectified my situation. I don't know that I can do that any longer. I think I'm just here to tell you how displeased I am. In May of 2007, my husband was 43 years old. He comes home from work, healthy guy, just drops on my kitchen floor, just starts shaking. I call 911, terrified. They come out and they see my husband, and he's had a real bad history with heart, with his brothers and all that, but that's beside. The ambulance came out and they said, "You know, Miss Agino, he needs to go to the hospital and he needs to go now." And I said, "Okay." I'm about a mile and a quarter away from Queen of the Valley. I asked, "Can he please go to intercommunity?" They said, "No, he really needs to go to the nearest hospital." I said, "Okay." And my husband says, "You know, I'm okay, I'm okay. You know, can I just -- my wife drive me?" "No, we really need you to go." And I know the history at Queen of the Valley. There's always a huge, long wait. I said -- they said, "We want him to go in the ambulance because if he goes in the ambulance, he'll go through the back and he'll get immediate care. You won't have to go through the foot traffic in the front, and we really think that his situation warrants this." "Okay, fine. You know, take him. Go. Let's go." My mom lives next door. I was, you know, went to my mom next door and I said, "Mom, get -- take the kids. You know, we're going to the hospital." I was two minutes, maybe five minutes behind my husband. I go into Queen of the Valley expecting to see my husband in the back with the paramedics, and my husband was inside the waiting room with about a hundred other people, and I was five minutes behind him. And this was on the advice of the fireman and the paramedic that he had to go and he had to be seen through the back. So I asked him, "Jeff, what happened?" And he says, "Sue, they just brought me in and they just dumped me here. They just told me, 'Sit down. Have a seat.'" I said, "Nobody checked you? Nobody took your blood pressure? Nobody did anything?" "Nope. They just wheeled me in and told me to have a seat." I went to the triage nurse and I said, "What's going on?" My husband came in through the ambulance, blah, 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 explained the story to her, and she says, "Have a seat." And I said, "Have a seat? How long is the wait?" She says, "It could be up to nine hours." And I said, "Oh, that's good. Thank you very much." So I took my husband. I called Intercommunity Hospital, explained to them the situation that is a sister hospital to Queen of the Valley, and they said, "Get him here right away." I got him there. They took Jeff's vitals and they direct admitted him to the coronary care unit. I was sickened, just sickened, to think that that was the care that I got. That being said, I have -- my husband's been a UPS driver for 30 years. We have great Aetna insurance. The night when they picked Jeff up, I provided them with my insurance right there. "Here's my insurance. Do what you need to do." On the heels of the situation that happened at Queen of the Valley and that two weeks later, I started making my phone calls. Anybody who knows me, I'm pretty on task with this stuff. I called Queen of the Valley. They went through the records and they said he was not seen in ER. He was just directly brought into the front. I was livid. I complained to the fire department. I complained to the ambulance driver. I complained to the Queen of the Valley. Queen of the Valley apologized. Everybody said, "Sue, you have a lawsuit on your hands." And I said, "My God, why would I sue my city? Why would I do that? It's not how I roll. It's not how I do things." So I thought it was all done. They asked me to give my opinion, and I did, and I went to go refinance my house, and the City of West Covina had put a credit against me for this ambulance ride for $890, which I had provided them insurance for. So I couldn't -- I went ahead and refinanced my house because I thought, "You know, I'm just going to go ahead and I'm going to fight this." Well, it comes up again in two -- it came back in 2012, or 2000, last October. It came up again. I went to go refinance my house. Here it is again, but now it's $1,200 because the City of West Covina has put a 10-year lien on my house for an ambulance ride that I disputed. So just in the -- just in the cycle of, just so you know, I've spoke to the people--
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. Speaker, I see you there in five minutes.
No problem. Sue, I think we're going to address this, have our chief come down and talk about this. So if we can get our card from our Assistant City Manager right now, we will address once all the other oral communications have been heard. Okay?
Okay, so what does that mean?
Well, we can't decide--
No, no, I-- No, no, I understand, I understand. So I, does it go to staff? Does it...
Yeah, we're going to do that in a minute, after we're done. We have like five more speakers.
I think, you know, it's a personal matter. I think we need to get a one-on-one with the city manager and the chief of, or fire chief and, well, I think it's elevated now. So, I mean, the council is the policymakers for the city. If our policy is to drop people off at the front door at emergency, I don't think we should be billing, but that's just my opinion.
And your individual case because of HIPAA, we can't discuss here anyway. You can, we cannot. So Sue, if we can direct you to, I think we have one of our assistant fire chiefs up here. If Chris Freeland can go up there. My concern overall is if she does have insurance, and I know her husband works at UPS, why we can't back bill and get whatever we get from them and call it a day? I don't understand personally. I was not for this whole policy, and we also have what's called balance billing, which I don't support either. So if your insurance only pays so much, the city has the ability to go after you for the difference. But if you're on Medicare or Medicaid or CalMed, they only take whatever they pay. If you have regular health insurance or from your employer health insurance, you're still working, you have to pay the difference. And I was against that when it was first done. I don't believe in balance billing. If we accept one person's health insurance for full pay, we should accept everyone's health insurance for full pay. It should be equal. That was a big issue. But if we can address that and find out if she does, and I know Jeff works at UPS, if we can see what we can do privately, it shouldn't be discussed here soon. Okay? Can we have Larry's up at the top coming up to you? Sorry about that. Forrest Wilkins is the next speaker, and John Schumaker's on deck.
Forrest Wilkins, 27th of this month, my wife and I have been residents of the city of West Covina for 40 years. I remember that date very well because that's the day we moved in, and it's my sister's birthday. Mr. Mayor, just a little comment about a few things that transpired during last city council meeting. Five Minutes of Fame, which Ray Hernandez referred to. I don't consider citizens coming up here and expressing their concerns about the city Five Minutes of Fame. I mean, isn't that the reason why we have oral communications? So it gives the citizens the opportunity to come up and express, maybe we can improve in this area of the city or bring to light, such as this last speaker just did? That's a terrible situation. And then last city council meeting, Jerry Curcio, I'll give a remark. I've known Jerry since he was in high school. I think Jerry's, I think Jerry's 50 now, isn't he? Close to it. So I've known him a long time. Lieutenant Tommy Garcia, and I don't remember the retired fireman's name, but the city recognized all three of those people for their hard work in getting things done, which is very appreciative. I know Jerry has spent a lot of time in that Little League field. Tommy Garcia, Lieutenant of Police, member of SWAT and everything else, and the retired firemen, whatever their call is, they always go ahead and do it. They don't stop and call their superiors and ask for a committee meeting to get something done. We recognize them for their initiative and what they were hired to do. That's in reference to Mayor Pro Tem Shelley Sanderson. Last couple of council meetings, she's been very ready till you say, call me and we can have a separate meeting. Well, this is the count, this, this is the committee meeting, in my opinion. This is the time that citizens can come here and express their concerns, what should be done. And I just think that we should take a more proactive stance in addressing the citizens' concerns. And then, Mayor, you have referenced the fact that due to the Clean Water Bill Act, the flood control channel and so forth, and reference the fact that the state law has this and how that impacts the city and so forth. Well, you know, Discover magazine has been mentioned more than one time at these city council meetings. Maybe one way to get some other people's attention is maybe put a little blurb in the Discover magazine that this is an issue that the state legislature has passed and how it's impacting the community. Maybe there should be something in there that maybe the state assemblyman and the state senator have been invited to address that issue. It concerns us and we need some help there. Maybe there should be something said about the Board of Supervisors, something about them. They're invited to come here, we address that we have an issue, how come there's silence? If you put something like that in Discover magazine, I bet you would get some attention from those legislative bodies. They don't like negative remarks, and that is a concern of our city, is it not? That's something that we have to face. How can we address that and smooth that out so it's better in our favor? You know, I did a little more checking on surrounding areas for trash services last, since the last council meeting. And you know, Valley Vista, they service Hacenda Heights, they charge $18.04 a month. Interesting, isn't it? When Athens made a bid of $16.00 and change for Rosemead because they won their contract. And then last city council meeting, the chief of police was called to the podium and he was quizzed about the tow service that we have. And I don't have the exact transcript, but he said something to the effect that two tow services breeds competition. And everybody in the city council seemed to acknowledge that that was a fair statement. Now, how would that be if we had two trash companies in our city? Would that breed a little competition? You know, we need to look at the Evergreen contract, we need to eliminate that, we need to get to the point where we have competition. I don't like paying $26.00 a month for my trash bill when I know it's a, Athens offered it in Rosemead for $16.00. They offer the same service. It's not fair. And one other thing about Athens, talk about recycling, which is according to the state bill and so forth, you know? You know that green barrel they pick up? I'll be through another 10 seconds, Mayor. That green barrel they take up, pick up? That's all recycled. They get money for that. They say that we, they recycle somewhere to 60% to 80% of their trash. What they recycle, they get money for that too. I'm over time. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Forrest. John Schumaker and Irene Fleck is on deck. And just so the public knows, we are limited on what we're allowed to fully answer, and I know Forrest, you're a former elected official yourself. Things that are not on the agenda, you can't go into full debate. There is a limit you have to be very careful of, and our city attorney will tell us when we're getting on that waiver. Sorry, John.
Oh, no problem. Oh, when Forrest brought up the, the aspect of trash, it reminded me of something. Many times, people have gotten up here and talked about the cost of something, that it's free. And different members of the council have rightly said, nothing is free, somebody pays for it, right? One way or the other. Well, I thought it was kind of interesting that I came across a flyer that Athens had passed out in Covina where they were telling businesses that you can separate your trash, you know, and it'll help us out quite a bit, but if you don't, we'll do it for you for They take it to the MERV and do it for free. Well, who's paying for it? Well, when I listen to Mr. Wilkins talk, I hear him talk about the rates that everybody else has and the rates that we have, and I go, you know, no wonder they can do it for free in other cities. We're paying for it. We pay $6, $7, $8, $10 more than everybody else, and we've been paying that for years. So maybe that's why they can do it everywhere else, cheaper, because somebody's paying for it. The other thing that I was wondering about was that every time I open the paper and something's gone on in the city, you know, I expect like, I think the woman's name is Sandra Gibbons for the DA's office is the spokesperson, and she comes out and gives a statement. She's paid to do that. She's their public information officer. Every time something goes on in West Covina, I open up websites or open up the newspaper and I see our mayor, which I think is good, the mayor being, you know, being out there saying things, you know, representing the city. Where's our public information officer? Now, I was thinking, we keep talking about how we have to come up with new and creative ways to do it. We've got the money for equipment, but what we don't have is the money for a person. Now, this person's paid 40 hours a week to do a job. You think every, out of that 80 hours, maybe four or five of them could be spent here running the cameras? Just a thought. And maybe there's some special agreement that person doesn't come to this building? Well, we can, we can, from Earth to Mars, make some changes and handle cameras and handle equipment. Maybe here to wherever that person lives, we could do the same thing. We don't have to spend any more money. You know, that type of thing, and it all washes out. Just a couple suggestions that you might want to look at. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Irene Fleck and Shirley Buchanan is on deck. Shirley.
Good evening. On a lighter note, and not to fault the previous things, because I think this is the place for people to come and talk to you as a group. I don't think the one-on-one is useful or even helpful at all. But let me get to the library, which you probably thought I was going to do. Our big thing, our, surprise, surprise, our big thing, of course, is our biannual book sale, which is in October, and that's Saturday, October 27th, from 4, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. And as usual, we have really collected some, some really great books for people who are book lovers and for people who aren't. So anyone that has time, come on down and see what you can buy for a very small fee. And the other thing I wanted to mention is the Flapjack fundraiser at Applebee's was really great fun. It was a new thing for us, and I think maybe we'll try it again next year. But this enables the Friends of the Library to co-sponsor many of the programs that the library puts on. So we're very excited about being able to do that sort of thing. And then the next thing is the San Gabriel Valley Literary Festival. It's the SGV Lit Fest, and I hope that people will start becoming familiar with that. It's something kind of new. It's a nonprofit organization. They're working right now to put together a three-day literary festival in February. Now, this is being co-sponsored by the city of West Covina, by the library, West Covina Library, and by the Friends. They're going to bring in all kinds of authors and artists, and it will be around the civic center here, and it'll be a chance for people to participate as actors, authors, and artists, but also to participate in having some really nice things brought to the city. So keep that in mind, the SGV Lit Fest is coming. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Shirley Buchanan and Alfred Williams is on deck. Alfred.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. It was with great excitement and hope at the last council meeting when the full council approved a study of video streaming of city council meetings, camera operators, and costs in other cities. I was very surprised that item 10 appeared on this council meeting agenda, and even more surprised that it appeared under the consent section. Then to make it even questionable, it is presented as a receive and file. At the end of the last council meeting, Chris Freeland, deputy city manager, was asked to respond to some of the questions that were posed during the open forum section of the agenda on this item. He repeated the same information that has been given to the residents many times before at this council. The only difference between then and tonight is that there is a very feeble chart of the streaming and cable of city council meetings in other cities. If that is to be the complete study that the council asked for, it falls miserably short of laying out a complete study. I would like to present you with what I believe to be the kind of information that the residents are entitled to in evaluating whether or not it is feasible for a better viewing system for the residents of West Covina. One, this report should have included number of cameras these cities use, number of operators, number of volunteers or interns, or staff assigned on, off, on-call hours. Do they provide workers comp? All of that information is very needed in order to make a good decision. There may be a few more factors, but this gives you an idea as to how lacking and incomplete information is being given to the residents in item number 10. If I were a teacher and assigned this research task to a student and it came back to me incomplete, I'm afraid I would give the student either a D or an incomplete grade. The city of West Covina, a very respected city in the San Gabriel Valley, can provide their residents with a much better study than what has been presented in the consent section of the agenda. I do not know who gave Chris Freeland the instructions to not put any effort into providing a more thorough report. It appears that the decision came in a, up, in, came up in higher management. Thank you.
Thank you, Shirley. Alfred Williams and Bruce Leinbach is our last speaker. Alfred.
Good evening, Alfred Williams. Over 35 years, resident of West Covina. I'm not going to beat you up anymore on that, about the video, but I am here to talk about it, and I guess I should, I'll put it this way, I'm bringing up an anecdote of when I was working in the engineering industry. I was done, I had a project to do, and that project was to determine from a bunch of equipment manufacturers which one the company wanted to buy their equipment from. And these pieces of equipment ran anywhere from $15,000 to $25,000 a piece. And as I was doing my study, I brought in each manufacturer and talked to them. And then one manufacturer, while I was talking to him, he says, he turned to me and says, you've given me all the negatives about what you don't like about our piece of equipment. Why don't you tell us what you like about it? Well, at that point, I realized I wasn't doing my job. And that's been what I've seen with this council. We've had an approach of looking at everything negative, instead of looking at what can we do to get the job done? What information do we need to get the job done? And I think that not only is negative, and as it's been within this council, but it's also going over to the staff. And that's why we get a report on video that's incomplete. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Bruce Leinbach.
Mayor and city council. First of all, I was kind of excited after the last meeting. I went and saw the replay on the TV, on the internet, and here they were. We had it all situated where we're going to have it, have a, have it on the agenda. And then I hear we're taking it off. I thought was voted on, and for some reason was not on. So whatever, I just felt like it slept underneath a rug. So, but also another comment that I thought, Mr. Toohey, when you're kind of belittling or disparaging, when these people come up, you say all they want to do is come up and see themselves on the camera. I disagree with it. I think it's real important to see people in person. Remember the election in 1960? Nixon won the election from people who listened to it on the radio. People who watched it on TV favored Kennedy, and you knew who won. I think it is very important, we're critical of the thing about the, we got one camera and you can't see people, you cannot see body language. And we're talking about this election, it's on CBS today, this one person said, who's going to win? Well, most important thing is not what they say, it's how they present themselves. Body language, delivery, or whatever, how fast, how slow, how they present themselves to the people, that's going to determine who wins. You can't get that feelings in this council. Mr. Toohey, you're so far away, a lot of people think you've, you've lost a lot of weight. So I'm just saying, so it's a, gives a bad perception. My son's girlfriend, I, I mean, she looked at it and, this word was used on TV today, but she thought it was kind of a crappy production. I want the council to be seen by everybody, all speakers, so they can make a determination who is flaky, or who's right, or talk to the, how they feel for the council. A lot of elections have been determined how people see them on the TV and the perception they feel. Now they're not getting that. And also, so the issue about the whole thing is, is that basically, we have $400,000, we can expand it, as far as equipment, but the equipment, we're the only one that only has about one camera, probably, but all the ones have multiple cameras and they got to hire cameramen. So the problem is cost. So the problem is cost. And to add cameras, Zusa has three, four cameras, or five, I think. Diamond has four, five, Covina, all these schools. And another question we have is this, is the number of cameramen we need to telecast the meeting. Mr. Freeland said we need two. I don't know, most of these other cities are using one. And I really feel that it'd be much better to have a cameraman in here and all this. Basic problem, cost. City of Covina and Zusa and all that have one cameraman. Now, we did have a, did make a cost on this, it was real incomplete. And it says we need to hire two part-time cameramen. How many hours? 1,000, 300, or whatever? So I did a basic computation, is that this year, we're going to project, we're going to have 20 meetings of the city council and 20 meetings of the, of the planning commission. That's 40 meetings, and you add that all up, times $30 an hour, comes up about $12,000. Of course, like I say tonight, I mean, I don't think they're going to be working five hours, so basically it comes down to about $10,000 a year. City of Zusa has five robotic cameras, they have one person who operates it. He operates as an independent contractor. He's paid $150 per meeting, $150 per meeting. So say, if you have 40 meetings during the year, he gets $6,000. If the meeting goes till 2:00 in the morning, he gets $150. If the meeting lasts one hour, he gets $150. Also, so I don't know why we can't put this cost together. We had, West Covina adds two more issues. You guys behind closed doors or whatever, a closed meeting, you're okay for $20,000. Here, we're talking about less money, but you already approved this for the West Covina discovery, and, you know, I think that's, that's not right. That could give me favoritism. The city council, we have $400,000, it can be expended to help get it better, and we aren't doing it. And the cost is only probably $5,000 to $12,000, $10,000, no reason why we can't do it. We do it for the West Covina discovery, but we don't do it for us. I feel the whole thing, the whole report was kind of convoluted. We got all this money here.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I still see there five minutes.
Okay, just a second. And I think that we should place it on the agenda. It wasn't placed on the agenda, it was removed. It's on the consent calendar, but I don't, I don't have it right in front of me. I think it's put in last, but I just felt that we are dealt the bottom of the deck.
You need to finish up, Bruce.
Thank you.
Thank you. That is our last speaker. First, to address a couple of the comments, Ray, I wasn't referring to you, okay? In the letter that Bruce passed out himself, and it was published in the Tribune, it said the speakers can't be viewed, and that was one of his concerns, okay? And it's in black and white, in front of all of you. He gave it to you. I was quoting what Bruce said. You did not say that, for the record, so I want to make sure that. But this is in Bruce's handout that he did, and he gave it to everyone in the audience. So I want to make sure that. The view you see, no matter what we do, they try to show the audience and some of the staff. We can make a tighter shot, but you can see us at all times. So when you talk about mannerisms at all times, whether it's smaller or bigger, if you shoot in a tighter shot, you still see the five faces of the council at all times. So I would disagree on that. Some people do a tighter shot and don't show the audience and don't show any of the staff. It is six of one, half dozen another on a single-shot type of issue. So that, that is a question. I greatly respect, everyone has a right to speak, that wasn't what I said. I said, this was again referring to someone wants to get their time and FaceTime on, and that's how the letter was written. Everyone does have a right to speak here at the, at the council meeting. We can't always address all the issues at the time. Everyone keeps on bringing up the discovery of West Covina. That takes advertising now, and the additional money was generated by profit. Okay? So it's not an exactly apple-to-apple comparison as the speakers have stated. There are ads that are coming out in it, and they're paying the additional money in that. And that is also, was in the report when that was done, and it's quite clearly was done at the council meeting when that was discussed. Some people make comments on Athens. I, you know, greatly respect the comments. They're not always 100% factual. Rosemeat, they have a three-can system, and the black can goes directly to the landfill. It does not get murfed. All the West Covina trash gets murfed. There is a distinct difference there. Two-barrel systems are different than three-barrel systems, okay? In a three-barrel system, you only go to a clean murf, you take the recyclables, and they still have to hand-sort it. They sort the newspapers from the bottles, from the glass. That's done in a three-can system, and it has to go to a clean murf. Athens operates what's called a dirty murf, which means they go through all the trash. All the cities right now are getting their rate increases, which you're going to be seeing shortly, I believe it's AB 341, which requires all businesses now to sort, separate their trash by law. So all their food processing must be put in a separate can. All cities, except cities that have Athens Murphing their trash, which Murphing's a material recovery facility. So since we operate a material recovery facility through our trash system, none of our business community and any other business community that has Athens, that has the Murphing component, has to add that. Every other city must add that on to all their rates for the future. Another pickup, another can. It's just the new law that went into effect. Some of the laws that are mentioned, they're done. I believe Shirley mentioned the overtime law, or someone mentioned the overtime law. That's a brand-new state law that this got approved. It wasn't us that volunteers are subject not to overtime, to workman's comp, potentially if they get injured. And that's why we haven't always done the program like some cities use, I don't know what you call them when you want to do, community service hours? We've been concerned with it because of potential liability. Cities have been hit with that, and that's been a concern allowing that. I do believe everyone has a right to say what they say here. It doesn't mean when they're saying that it's factual. It just means it's potentially their opinion of what's being done. The city that, Rosemeat also, I believe Forrest mentioned, does not pay a franchise fee, which ours is $200, or $2.24, $2.44 a month extra. Rosemeat does not collect that at all, and they do not go to the Murphing system. There's a whole bunch of new legislation. The county did uphold the closure of Pointe Hills landfill. It was a 5-0 vote. All trash will in go into Pointe Hills landfill come July of 2013, and therefore, people either have to take it by rail or by a transport through a murf system, which is a lot more expensive. We've already done that. That's another hit coming down the line when we entered into a Murphing agreement a long time ago, and that's why we got our diversion credits. Athens is one of the few cities or companies that also bought the green waste facility because another state law does not allow green waste to be used as daily cover anymore at our landfills. We've been using it instead of dirt to cover the trash. That's no longer going to be allowed by law. So you have to bury the grass, and it counts as trash. But they have a system, they've already bought a fertilizer facility that will convert that to fertilizer, and we still get the AB 939 credit for diversion rate, which I believe our diversion rate, we divert 69% of all of our trash does not go to the landfill. We only dump 31%. And that is also very controversial when your base rates were established many years ago. But we were one of the first cities in the state of California to meet our diversion goal, and we're still one of the first cities, or still the continuing city that has kept it. Most cities have not met it, and they've been let off the hook. So just wanted to clarify some of the stuff. Not all the stuff, I'm sorry, Bruce. I have lost 100 pounds, I'm sorry you don't notice it. I'm very sorry about that. I'm 375, my lightest weight in probably 15 years. I know you think 375, holy crap, that's big, but yeah, it's light to me. So, and I'm sorry, Ms. Messman thinks I should turn my back to the audience. I try to pay attention to people when they speak, and I'm sorry, you want me to disrespect the audience. I disagree there. And I will continue to pay attention to the speakers, whether they agree with me or disagree with me. To me, that's very disrespectful with what was said. We drop down to our consent calendar. Item number eight on the consent calendar has already been pulled off due to the city manager's illness. Is there any other items on the consent calendar any council member wishes to pull off for a separate action? Council member Fred Sykes.
Item 10, just for a brief discussion, the broadcast.
No problem. Thank you. Any other items?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve all items but item 10 on the consent calendar.
And that takes off also?
Yes.
Item eight?
Right.
I have one brief comment, then on item number nine, what we're asking the city council to support in the, in the city is, the state, or the United States are talking about selling all the, a lot of the foreclosed homes in bundles of 500. So what would create is a whole bunch of rental properties in different cities. And to me, I think it's better, and what we're talking about doing is supporting not the bulk sale of them, but allowing individuals to buy them so we don't have rental properties necessarily created in large groups. But hopefully, individual homeowners who can repair the home and bring it back to life, to me, the bulk sale is a bad precedence to set, selling 500 to 1,000 homes at a time to large institutional investors who probably were the people that loaned the money to the people in the first place that lost their home. It's like you're letting them profit a second time. So that's on our agenda also, item number nine. Okay, we have eight and 10. All those in favor of the rest of the consent calendar, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, 5-0. We drop down to item number 10. Council member Sykes.
The public has spoken out loud and clear. To my dismay, some people may ask for transparency and want things open, but by the few numbers that we have here that says volumes, and that concerns me. And it's pretty much like what happens at the voting polls oftentimes. Very few show up, then after something's happened, and then they ask the question, "What happened?" We just fail to pay attention. That's what's happened. This takeaway of the broadcast occurred in June 2008. Nobody showed up, like they should have. We have 112,000 people that live in this city, and more than that, actually. The time we did get some serious concern about activity was when it came to some of the parking issues. This place was packed. And that's because somebody felt that someone's digging it in their pocket unnecessarily. But however, and I feel that the broadcast was more important than the parking issue. Because the broadcast, as stated earlier, it helps us your ability to get information, all sorts of information. And right now, if you don't have the Internet, and I have talked to some people, to my dismay, the majority of them are in my age group, who actually say, "I don't have the Internet." There is a public library that can help out for those folks, but that's pretty uncomfortable, putting the trouble from home. And pretty soon, it's going to be low light hours, and the weather's going to change eventually, where it's going to be a little bit uncomfortable, maybe a little bit on the cold side. They try to come out at night, and a lot of people up in age do not like to travel late at night. And that was one of the issues that was brought up. Also, we have some folks who have not been able to make it to the city council meetings, and I've seen people that have fallen away, that would love to be able to see more clearly what is going on, because they were here helping build the city. And I've seen some that have passed away, and I've seen some that have gotten ill that I saw in the six years when I showed up to seriously get involved, to participate. I feel that we are doing a disservice by not doing at least the minimum of getting a more complete report as to what is available and what we can do with what we have. We have $400,000. We have an opportunity to ask, we don't know the number, but we have an opportunity to ask, once we come up with the viable plans, who would volunteer to help? How much would we have to pay? One city pays $150 per broadcast. We do have $400,000 that we can work with. We have companies that may assist if we need to do some fundraising for that effort. So I just think that as a city council, we owe it to the public to do a little more than where we're at right now. Thank you.
I forgot to ask, Chris, if you wanted to respond to some of the comments that were stated, it was not our report, even though people, we don't participate in the crafting of the report, so.
Sure, I'll direct these questions, just are responsive mostly to the questions that I heard from some of the members of the community. One of the speakers spoke that this has always been an issue about webcasting, and for that individual speaker, he's absolutely correct. It's been about webcasting. However, there are other members of the community, other speakers, who have addressed cable television coverage. So I want to make sure that that individual speaker knows that it's not just been webcasting for everybody, but there has been discussion about cable television as well. Consultants, using consultants was not part of the staff report, because as I heard tonight, consultants are more expensive than bringing in a part-time member of the staff in here to work for a few hours. In the report, it does say that it's, staff estimates about $30 an hour for a city council meeting. That would be providing two staff members to provide that service. At $150 a meeting, or $50 for a consultant per hour, the rate that the city would get with two part-timers is still less than those services. Because if you did $150 per meeting for 20 meetings, that's still more expensive than potentially having maybe tonight a three-hour meeting, a four-hour meeting, versus knowing that you're going to have someone who's going to be working five hours or more. There was a comment about the staff report not having a survey of the costs from other cities. And part of that is that, again, this has been seen as the lowest-cost option, other than, I know council member Sykes has addressed the issues of volunteers, and that is kind of addressed here in the staff report, that we did have a volunteer program with Mount Sac students in the past, even though they're getting school credit for that program, on-the-job training. The problem that the city had is, is that even the students weren't being dependable, and they're getting credit for the class and showing up. The volunteers, you know, it's unfortunate, things do come up. We have interns here working at the city. They have jobs outside of this organization that have a priority. They have a family outside this organization that has a priority. So things come up, anniversaries come up, birthdays come up. And so to have someone available to backfill, you're talking about having a large volunteer base. But more importantly is the cost to train those volunteers. So you're talking about bringing in Mount San Antonio College to do the training on the equipment, and that's assuming that we keep those volunteers. That's why we moved away from that volunteer program based on the vice at Mount Sac several years ago and brought in our own cable television operations. Another speaker mentioned the number of cameras. We have four cameras that are available here in our city council chambers. Other cities do have more, maybe four or five. Some of them have less. Some of them don't even provide the service. That wasn't part of the survey because in the past, four cameras have served as well where we can cover every angle in the city council chambers. And that means all the speakers. The speakers are included, council members, staff, and members who come up to the dais. So the study did not include cameras. So the study did not include cameras, because the camera system that we have does cover the room. I will say, though, if there's a need to upgrade equipment in here, should we ever go back to, and hopefully we do, back to the cable television broadcast or webcasting in the future, when we financially are able to, we do have about $380,000 in PEG funds, that those funds can be used for the equipment to upgrade the system in here. Staff has never contended that we don't have the funds for the equipment. It's just, it's been a policy decision of the council that as these economic times have been tough, we just don't have the general fund dollars to support hiring staff. As was contained in the staff report, as members of public have come back to the council and said, you know, in 2008, you eliminated the broadcast on cable television. Is there any way you can at least get something, audio, for example, on the webcasting? City council took that into consideration, directed staff to do so. We were able to use that with the PEG fees. So we were able to provide audio here to the community. Community then came back and said, you know, we really wish we could have video, even if it is just one camera. That system was upgraded to include that one camera. So now we're looking at an additional cost, a general fund dollars, in order to maintain the operations. And that's really going to be a policy decision in the city council. I believe I've answered all the questions. I do want to mention, though, again, there has been discussions here at the dais, excuse me, not the dais, but from the community, that West Covina is the only city in Southern, or excuse me, in California that does not provide either cable television broadcasting or webcasting. Just in the San Gabriel Valley alone, we found 11 cities do not provide cable television broadcasting. So I think that that's showing, and I, as my discussions with, like, for example, City of Claremont, they moved away from it and are focused on webcasting, because a majority and a lot more folks have access to the internet than they have cable television. And City of Rosemead, I spoke to their assistant city manager, they only have webcasting and they have one fixed camera in the back of their council chambers. And they have no members of the community that complain about that. They provide that service and feel that the residents are happy with that service. So again, it's just going to be a decision here locally, if it's something that the city council wishes to move forward on, is what kind of costs the city is wanting to incur in these tough economic times.
Any other questions? Councilmember Satello.
Just like I turn on my button right now to talk, if I think if we had three cameras, one on the dais, one on staff, and one on us, you get to have a closer picture now of me talking. When Chris was just talking, you have a camera when he pushes this button of staff. And when someone's talking on the dais, you have a person, you can see the dais. I mean, I'm a plumber, but I mean, they do make electronical things that the camera could go from one to another to another without too much hassle. It wouldn't cost as any other people. We could put three cameras in here, and I think people would get what they want. All they want to see is our faces more. That camera could be more on me right now, and they can see us now. When I turn off my mic and you talk, it could go on to somebody else. I don't think this is that big of a science. I don't think it was that big of a thing. I think we need to work on a lot more things for our city right now than this webcasting. We really need, I mean, that's one thing, but my deal is, is I think we can take some avenues and look different ways. They are right. I would like to see somebody's face. When I see Bruce talk, when he has a motion, when I saw Mr. Gino just talk right now, she had an emotion, people like to see that. So I think we could work that way. If we could do maybe three cameras, we could help out quite a bit, and it would take us a step forward to achieving the goal that we're looking for. Thank you.
The one other comment I would just add is, I think multiple speakers spoke about seeing everyone's body language and stuff, and if you're going to be focusing on the speaker, you don't see the other members of the dais or the person from the audience speaking there. You only have one focus camera on that individual. So you could undo, I believe Bruce brought it up, and I don't want to, because then I'll be beat up next week for saying it wasn't Bruce. Someone brought it up, that you need to be able to see the body language. Well, if you focus on the individual speaker, whoever it may be, whether at the podium or on the dais, you will not see anyone else, you won't see their photo. So it's never going to be perfect that way unless you have split screens where you show, like my security system does at home, where I can see five different or eight different camera shots all at one time. Then it will be too small. I mean, I'm telling you, I have a security system at home and you can see outside. I don't know if you can delineate what that is outside, because the square is so small. I'm thinking about putting a magnifying glass over my security screen so I can actually see it. But it's hard, because no matter what we do, and I believe this was first originally done based on Ray Hernandez's suggestion to do webcasting, and I agendized it, and now I'm the GOAT in it. And that's why I'm saying, no matter what you do, you're better not to do anything, because then you can't really get attacked. And I strongly will disagree with some of the different comments. You can't get it all. I'm glad Bruce did bring out his opinion letter, which, what I was referencing, I'm glad it was this, because I was attacked for that, that I said it about all the speakers. I was saying what the letter was about it, and it's just, that to me is a concern here, no matter what we do. And it's just going to be a forum for Fat Mike to make some comment here tomorrow. Is there any other discussion on this or motions?
Mr. Mayor, let me just make a couple of comments here. You know, I think it's no secret that council meetings have deteriorated over the years. Back in 1990, when I was first elected, there was a lot more decorum at council meetings now. The public has the opportunity to make personal attacks, and they do it regularly, which is freedom of speech, and nobody's going to stop that, or they shouldn't stop that. It's the choice that people make as to how they perform or address themselves in public. And the one thing that came out tonight, which was a little bit surprising, was the political nature of the discussion as far as cable television and also of Discover. And somebody made the conclusion that we direct staff how to do staff reports. First off, none of us ever direct staff to do staff reports. They do them, they come to their own conclusions. We don't necessarily always agree with them, and that's what government's all about. We set policy here. But to attack staff on that level is wrong, and I want to defend my staff. If you look at the Discover magazine, which is very popular in the city of West Covina, I hear from so many people that they appreciate that the city does that. And that's why in the budget this year, we did increase the Discover, and the information in this Discover talks about the budget and how we've eliminated 107 positions since 2007. That's a quarter of our workforce. I don't know of any company that's done that and provides the same services, and yet we do. So I mean, we, the one speaker that spoke about the positives of West Covina, or a couple of them mentioned it, my job here is to improve the lives of the residents of West Covina. It's not, as Mr. Sykes says, get people out to meetings to voice their opinion. We have the same comments from the same people every meeting. I appreciate that they want to come up and tell me every meeting what they think, but when I hear it once, twice, Bruce Leinbach has been since 2006 or '08 or whatever on cable television, and I know that's his issue. I know how Bruce feels about that. I've been through a few elections, and that's been a topic of discussion, and we've changed it as we've heard from the public. And I don't know that we'll ever have it perfect. I mean, it seems like as we get into the discussion, there's things that people want that, you know, we're not going to be able to achieve. My job, improve the lives of the citizens of West Covina, protect and serve them. City government is not like it used to be. We don't have the revenue sources that we have. We've balanced the budget this year. My goal is to balance the budget next year. I can't add a lot of fees to the budget. We, as we have positions that are vacant, we tend to not fill them. We know what's coming. We know that there's more challenges in the next year's budget. And, you know, hopefully we can address that without having to raise taxes on the residents, because everybody is hurting right now, and we all know that. So anyway, I'm open to looking at stuff if it's no-cost items. If there's somebody here that can push buttons, maybe we can take turns at council meetings. I don't know, each one of us, I don't care. Somebody here, if that's something that works, that's fine. I just don't want to spend a whole lot of money on something that is going to bring in staff and additional costs. So I'm okay with a no-cost item if it's just pushing buttons. I don't know if that's feasible.
I wouldn't mind looking at what councilmember Satello brought up, but again, if it's voice-activated or something, when one of us, when one person has a floor and the other person speaks, the camera will shift. It would be an interesting, when you do that, when we had the live broadcast, our people slowly pan over and pick up the other speaker. It would be very chaotic for you to watch TV shows if they were that way. That's why they're done normally with multiple camera shoots, when they do them, to follow the shots. But that's an intriguing thing. I've never heard of that before, that it may pick up when you turn on your mic. Most of us keep our mics on. Shelley's mic's on, she's not even here. I don't know who turned that on.
I didn't turn it on.
That's it? Is she here? Okay.
I don't know who did.
So I have no problem looking at that, that system. Again, I don't know if that even.
Why don't we make a motion to have staff look into that and come back with a report on whether it's feasible to do it with no cost? I'll make a motion to make that recommendation.
Let's take a motion. Okay. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Pass this 401. Last item on the agenda is councilmember Frederick Sykes's request, for councilmember Frederick Sykes's request in city council to instruct city staff to prepare a report evaluating the city's trash removal contract. Councilmember Sykes?
Thank you, Mayor Tewey. It's nice to see that we have new people that show up, whether it be through rumor or whatever. But at least we have new faces showing up that are concerned about the city and what direction we're going, and that's nice for me to see. Hopefully you can bring some neighbors with you, family and friends. Now about this Anthems, why do we keep revisiting it? You know, I, the first thing, let's get this clear. Let's be real clear. Anthems, when it comes to their service, as the speaker indicated earlier, her experience has been wonderful. And for my community, I know several folks that agree with her. The service is very good. The truck drivers are outstanding. My wife has sent an accommodation, has sent an accommodation for the quality of the service that is given by our driver that drives our route. So it's not about, for most of the people that I know, it's not about them giving a subpar service at our door. It's about the bottom line. It's about what we don't have right now, we're concerned about. It's the money. It's the details of the contract. In 2007, when I first saw the contract, I was concerned. And this is without being an attorney, just pretty much new to try and read very complicated contracts. And the first thing that jumped out at me was the Evergreen situation. That, to have a company here forever, I mean, to wash your car, to take your trash out, I don't think you would do that at your home if you had a choice. Most of us don't do that. Technology changes, situation changes, the size of your vehicle, et cetera. So that is an unfair position for us to be in when there is a no-bid forever, no-bid forever contract. What that means is, we don't have a chance to see what another company can ever do for us. That's what that Evergreen forever no-bid situation puts us in. I don't think that's in the best interest of the taxpayers. Furthermore, you know, this contract, it's about trust, transparency, and there's even some antitrust issues that have been brought up dealing with this company. And as a matter of fact, Hacenda Heights, those folks were so upset and so repulsed by what the county council did with the decision, as they did it by the busload, they went to the Hall administration. Now, folks in West Covina, they can just come a few miles and deal with this issue, but they don't come here in numbers. Hacenda Heights, as a collective, they sent their voices to the county council. They were concerned, and they didn't want to be put in a position with the company that they felt they wouldn't be happy with. And it's also our fiduciary responsibility, when you look at this, at this contract, beyond the no-bid situation, people mentioned it tonight, we have how Anthems, the contract allows our money to work for them. Our position also subsidizes for other situations, other services to be provided to other cities, because it looks as though we pay for it by paying sometimes more than twice as much. Also, when they go to financial institutions, whenever they want to broaden their hold on the valley here, they have us, and I don't know how many other companies that have a, I'm sorry, how many other cities, that have a no-bid Evergreen clause that puts them there forever. That's pretty powerful when you go to a, to a financial institution and you want to get money. You got guaranteed money coming in, and those folks don't have a thing to say about it. So we work for Anthems. That works very well as, when you go in to present your case to get money. The MRF, that was mentioned tonight, the material recovery facility. That makes a lot of money. If you go and take a tour of that facility, you'll see that our recyclables are bundled, packaged up, and prepared to be delivered to whatever the going rate is worldwide. It is a huge production. And because we have no negotiation rights, we're stuck. We don't get compensated for their gain. Also, there appears to be a violation of the law. Now, again, I'm not an attorney, but I do know that there's a law out there that talks about being taxed without approval. If we discover by way of re-review of this contract that there's a pass-through of monies, which it appears to be, where you pay a fee, and then those monies are passed through the company and then given to the city. Now, anything I pay to the government in the way of expenses, a lot of it to me translates to one thing, a tax. And that should be reviewed to see if that franchise fee, or whatever they call those fees, that allow for the monies to be passed, and I'm not saying we don't need the money. What I'm saying is transparency. Don't deceive us. Don't hoodwink us. It should be what it is. If it's a tax, then let's get real. And someone mentioned tonight that our city, in order to get And someone mentioned tonight that our city, in order to get more stabilized and stronger, the T-word was put out there. We don't want to do that, but it's about being honest and laying all the cards on the table and showing what the expenses are. To slide a tax through without our approval is somewhat deceitful, and we're not being transparent. Bottom line. That's why I said this, this is about transparency, this re-review of what, because this is a complicated document. This is written by wordsmiths that know very well how to say one thing and it end up being another, such as the Evergreen. That's beautiful in the way it sounds, but how many of us knew what it meant when we first heard it as it was brought out if you read, if you read the contract? And we've also lost the ability to come here and address the contract. We lost that town hall meeting in, in 2007. That means we lost a lot in the way of what could have been explained to us in the details. Now we don't get that. What we get is surprises in the mail oftentimes, especially those of us who are not paying attention. We get these hidden taxes and, and increases. We get retroactive fees. If you look at your, at your bill, there's a retroactive rate increase here. I don't recall getting an explanation as to what that's about. The town hall meetings, I'm sure some of us would have been asking that question. What's this retroactive stuff about? So, in, in closing, the bottom line is, the contract itself, it's not about the door-to-door It's about the details of the contract, and a lot of these things that we are put at a disposition about should be changed. Should be changed. And nothing was any worse than not to have a clear and concise explanation as to why Redondo Beach by the ocean pays $12 a month, and we pay over $26 a month to the same company for the same thing. That needs to be explained. That's what this re-review is about, finding out where we at and how do we get the best in the way of service and cost for the residents. Thank you.
You have any comments? Councilmember Satello?
Well, I myself, I'd like to go through the contract, okay? I mean, and if we can go through the contract and see why we paid the 29 compared to what Rosemead does. And I'd like to have staff that they can bring him back and show us why they paid 29, why someone else pays this, why the different rates. What are we paying for? And that's all. I mean, this should, this shows what we're paying for. Give us a breakdown of what we're paying for and why we're paying for it. That's what I would like for my seat. Thank you.
Fred, I, I disagree with you on some of the issues that you're raising, like a Prop 218 point, which is different than what has gone on in Manalbello, so I want to emphasize that. Currently, all the residents out there, you pay a franchise fee from Southern California Edison, the city receives, you pay it. The gas company, Charter Communication, anyone who uses the city's right-of-way pays the city for the use of the city's intellectual property that they may own. It's done all over. We, I believe we receive close to $3 million a year in franchise fees that way, and to me, that has been standard. I think there was actually, the legislation of Prop 218 had a date when the stuff was established. Some of you would remember in 1992, when the Athens did take over, it was after the CHP caught a West Covina disposal at that time, which was owned by, I believe, Roy Proctor, his daughter, and Rayford Johnson, the Olympic star, were using someone to sign off on their truck inspections, fix-it tickets. Unbeknownst to West Covina disposal at that time, that CHP officer that had signed some stuff off before had retired. Very important to know if the guy's still working or not with, if you're using his signature. The signature was still used to sign off fix-it tickets on a person who's no longer employed by the CHP, and that's what came in when Athens bought the contract from West Covina Disposal Service and took over this existing contract. It's had an Evergreen clause for many years prior to anyone on this council. The years have sometimes changed, but Fred, you personally, I'm slightly different. I have a gardener I like at my home, and I pay, just like some of us have doctors. I, if someone's providing me good service, I don't shop my doctor. I, I like the service I get from that particular doctor, where you get your car repaired, you mentioned that. It's slightly different. It's no different than the contract you disapproved yourself or the tow companies. When they're providing what you believe is a good service, it's in my mind okay to look at extending those contracts, in which we all did with them. That came with fees attached to it, too. There was no Prop 218 notice. So it's this, it's an interesting way to look at it. I, I believe, and I have no problem looking at it and bringing it all back, I believe, number one, we can bring this back for a full review of their contract. I know they've wanted to have it reviewed before. They have to also allow us to. I know there is a process, because they do have a contract. So, I have no problem looking at that, Fred, but I know that when this, people bring up different contracts, it's important to bring up all of their rates, and I know one of the person always brings up Rosemead, where they went with the highest bidder and did not give it to the lowest bidder, and they also granted that bidder who won the contract a 41% increase against commercial. We have to be cognizant of all that, because likewise, and we have some of those same rules in place here, where seniors pay a lower rate than everyone else under Prop 218. You can only charge for the services rendered. You can't force someone else to per se, the way it's being said, subsidize someone else. That's what's being done in Rosemead, where the business community is paying 41, I think 41.89% more, according to the newspaper article that I read. But you need to have everyone's rates, all the rates across, so you see that, so you understand fully each and every contract, and it, believe me, every city is totally different. City of Covina, I believe, only charges a 5% franchise fee. On your bill, the way you see your bill today is a thing I brought to the council, because prior to the change on your bill, you never seen the franchise fee and the AB 939 fee separated out, and I thought that was disingenuous to act like Athens was getting that money when the money was actually being passed through to the city. That's why when you see your bill, if you have a 90-gallon can, green and, and black, I believe you're paying 24.44. I just got my bill today, and I think then there's a separate charge over, there's two other fees. One's 2.44, and the other one's like 18 cents. Those are monies that go 100% to the city of West Covina, but they're separated now. All cities charge different. All cities have different processes. All cities charge commercial, the senior discounts, the size of the can differently. In the city of South Almani, like I've said, in the city of Irwindale, they don't pay for trash service. The commercial pays 100% of the cost. In the city of South Almani, the residents pay zero. In the city of Irwindale, the city of Irwindale pays the bill, and the residents do not. So I'm saying it's hard to compare always 100% apple with apple, when if you look at 30 contracts, I can tell you ahead of time, and Fred, I have read the contract, that you will see 30 different fees. We talked about the PEG money on cable TV. That is a tax. That tax has been suspended here. That takes a vote of the city council to reestablish that, but that is a tax. And even though everyone talks about the PEG fees, no one's ever said we should have a Prop 218 hearing on the franchise fees Charter Communication pays. To me, if you're going to argue that, you should argue that all the way across the board on everything. I brought to this council, motion numerous times, to do away with the franchise fee 100% in the city. That would lower your bill. I want to make sure, in fairness, that would be a $1.5 million hit to our general fund. It comes with consequences, so it's not always this to say, let's cut it. It can come with pain. So it's not 100% all, and if we ended all the other franchise fees we collect, like I said, from the gas company, from Southern California Edison, certain people bypass our franchise fee since Charter Communication uses our, our right-of-way, they have to pay a franchise fee. Some other companies do it by virtue of satellite. They do not. So DirecTV can give you the same services that Charter does. DirecTV does not pay franchise fee. Charter does. It's an interesting paradigm you get in on people being equal. Some people, AT&amp;T, U-verse, I forgot all the different ones we have. I believe that bypasses our right-of-way system also, and there's just things to look at. I have no problem, like I said, bringing the whole thing back to look at it, because I do believe that there's a lot of other things that I believe the city knows about in the contract where there could be potential problems, too, in a bad way for the city. Councilmember Sykes?
Just a point of clarification, the franchise fees, we have a right to charge franchise fees, but that's normally done to the, to the company that's doing business, that has a privilege of doing business in the city. That's normally not done by the taxpayers. So, I just want to make that clear. That's normally how it's done. The franchise fee is paid by the company for the privilege of using our streets and so forth, of being able to do business in, in the city. Now with the tow cut, tow truck situation, if you listen to my line of questioning from the last city council meeting, I think you would have concluded that if I had the support, if I thought I had the support, let me put it that way, if I thought I had the support, we would only have one, because some time ago, I talked about how, from my position, we need to be masters of efficiency. So if we got two companies here, we duplicating things, and it's also been proven that that one company, well, that one company can, can do it. They did it before, and it could have been done again. But because I felt that I didn't have support, it's a fight I didn't want to get into. So, just so that we're clear on that, I felt we really could do well with one company, and I thought that could be done. The, the point about other cities having the luxury, having the luxury, having the ability to choose, that's what Rosemead did. If they want to pay higher, no problem, because that's what they wanted to do. That's the point here also with the Evergreen. It would be nice for West Covina to have that luxury of choice again. I think it's only fair. That's, that's very important, that they chose to pay more. They had a choice. We don't have any choice. We're stuck, and that's part of the situation here. I don't think West Covina should be stuck. You know, I think we're pretty proud, and we look forward to making choices. That's why we get out here and work hard. Same thing with your security. I'm sure you made choices on which company you would go with, and that would be a nice luxury for West Covina to have again. Let us do the choice. If you want to pay more, even if it's Athens, I don't mind, but I do want that choice. I think that's important in every aspect. Choice is important. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other comments? The only thing I would, was intriguing with your comment is that with the tow companies, you said that one would be the best efficiency. That was interesting. I, I thought that was interesting. What's happened all across Los Angeles County, it's going on in the city of Los Angeles, is that's why they brought up Hacenda Heights, that there is no longer open territories. There's almost exclusive contracts everywhere in Los Angeles County due to AB 939 reporting. And who's liable? When you have multiple people, you can't just say one person's liable then, because you have multiple agencies that are required to do it. But I'm saying the city of Los Angeles is doing it currently. They currently have, I think, 70 haulers. They're going down to 10, and they're going to have an entire district no different than what the county of Los Angeles did. The county picked a higher bidder in the city of Hacenda Heights, or in the county of Hacenda Heights than what was proposed. They just, there's no question, I don't disagree with what the statement stated. Another trash hauler did rent buses and bring people down to the supervisor's meeting to complain about the other person. That happens, and I'm telling you, they are all guilty of that. Okay? I want to be fair there. Depending upon what city, city it is, if it's a waste management city, all the other competitors are bringing the busloads. That's kind of deceiving, because you say, well, 300 people showed up, yeah, but actually four companies did. You just didn't realize that at the time, so I respectfully disagree with some of your comments, but I respect and understand and encourage the debate. What is our motion here? I have no problem bringing back the entire contract, and I know Athens has wanted to talk about this also, so we can put it up for a review.
Is that your motion, Mayor? Because I'll second it.
That's fine.
Thank you.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? 401. Thank you. We go down to mayor councilmembers' reports. Any councilmember wishing to make a report? AB 1234 conference meeting and report? Is anyone needing to make a meeting? Councilmember comments?
Mr. Mayor, I want to just clarify, earlier on when we talked about the cable TV and we're going to bring back information, I'm not expecting it at the next meeting. You know, one of the things that I've seen over the last six months is most of the agenda items are, are items that sometimes come back two or three times. I want to make sure if we're going to bring something back, that it's going to work. I think the residents would appreciate that, too. So if people are expecting it in two weeks, give our staff some time to do it right, and we don't have to bring it back three or four times.
Councilmember Satello?
I'd like to see if you can agenda this term limiting. You heard me, Chris. I'd like to see if you can agenda this term limiting for a...
The term limits, I think, has got to vote, the people, or no?
The term limits, I think, has to go to a vote of the people, or no?
My understanding is it's coming back on the agenda for discussion as a...
I understand. The question was, does it have to go and be voted on? Is it by measure or proposition, or is it by council action?
I believe it could be by either method.
Perfect. No problem. Okay. Do we have any other adjournments? I'd like to adjourn the meeting in memory of one of my daughter's friends, Rainie. She, they don't know the exact time she died, and she is the former mayor of La Puente, John Solis's niece. She died and right by, I don't know if John Shoemaker's still over, by, on, by Calico and Donna Beth.
Oh, that was a girl?
Yeah, the one that was in the paper. She's been to our house many times. I've known her mother for many, many years at the dairy. We still don't know the full cause of death. She was missing for a few days, and they finally found her right near the entrance of, just off of Aroma and Donna Beth and Calico. They found her in the backseat of her car. So our prayers go out to the family, and we can adjourn a meeting in memory of Rainie. She was 21 years old. Motion to approve that?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned at 8:50.